Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. This meeting of the Redding Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners is being broadcast live at the RMLD's office at 230 Ash Street in Redding. Live broadcasts are available only in Redding, but the meeting was videotaped for distribution to the community TV stations in North Redding, Wilmington, and Linfield. The RMLD Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair. We ask that all questions and comments from the public be directed to the Chair and that all parties act in a professional and courteous manner when addressing the Board. Once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the Board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. Dave Hennessy, our newest Commissioner, is not able to attend tonight due to a work commitment. Phil will be the Board Secretary. And hello, Dennis Kelly, he's going to be the CAB representative tonight. Okay, and is there anybody? I don't think there's anybody in the public to comment, but I'll ask anyway because it's on the agenda. I do have a brief report that I'd like to make. First of all, that on April 1, a very important meeting in town, which is the Economic Development Meeting with the Metropolitan Area Planning Council is part of that. It'll be at the Senior Center at 6:30, and I plan on attending, and I saw John's name. I don't know if anybody else. Jane and Colleen are probably going to go. RMLD can be a key part of economic development with our low electricity rates, and so it's great that this meeting is happening, and we hope to participate. Also, I'll probably hand this one over to Jane. Jane is acting as General Manager tonight in Colleen's absence, but we have some progress on at least getting a process going for identifying sites for community solar. And Jane, you wanted us-
Sure, be happy to. After our, I believe it was either the December or January meeting that members of the Redding Climate Committee, Action Committee, attended, Tom O'Lilla from my department met with the committee members as a whole, and they agreed to form an ad hoc committee for community shared solar. They've met twice since. Members of that committee include Gina Snyder, Joan Bowler, and Mike, that was here at the meeting. Their next meeting is scheduled for Monday at 7 o'clock here at the Light Department. In addition to that, Tom has met with Jesse Wilson from the Town of Redding Community and Planning Division, and Jesse has agreed to be a part of that committee and is going to solicit any other interest from the Town of Redding. In addition to that, we're developing a press release indicating the progress that we're making, the hope of going from our Green Choice program, which is a form of rec payment, to including power renewable projects into our portfolio, to having something tangible on our system within each of the four towns. So we're working on the business model, we're working with Redding closely, but with the eventual hope to have community solar in all the towns that we serve.
That's great to see. And is it just the municipal buildings, or are we still looking for an industrial land site if one were available?
I think we want it to be accessible to the residents. I think that's our first goal. If we can't go, then we'll look at other sites. I think as the program expands and depending on the need, if there's commercial customers that are really interested, we might have to look at those types of sites already. So we're not really narrowing it down, but we're first focusing on municipal buildings.
Thank you. And the third one is just that I understand that there's a private company that may want to actually add to our fiber optic network in our district, that we would build it and they would use it, and it's, this might, I just think it's a good idea for the Board to maybe have the Policy Committee take a look at when it is that we should be involved in making decisions and setting strategy on this part of our business. I think to date, over the past 15 years, there's been contracts that have been signed and it never came to the Board's attention, and that's probably, maybe that's fine, but, so I guess I'd just like to schedule a policy meeting where we can take a look at that.
I'll check with Jeannie, but I think April 23?
Yeah, we have a policy meeting scheduled, right? Yes, already, so maybe we could include it on that agenda.
Just add an agenda item, and we can just start thinking about what, if anything, we should be doing on that front. And with that, we'll move on to the Report of the Committees, and Phil?
Yeah, the only thing I have on the, the Policy Committee did meet, and we did look at the surplus property policy, and I think we pretty much kind of got the general idea and referred it for a little bit more scrubbing at this point, so.
And I had, I didn't mean to interrupt you-
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, I'm done.
I had an email from Mark Doxer of FinCom that they did, they did, I am waiting to hear what happened last night, last night at FinCom, but that the first phase of their project is completed, and they liked the policy changes that we made. And I'm just waiting to hear a final word from him on that, and maybe we can talk about that more formally at the next meeting.
Great.
And then we have General Manager's Report. Jane?
Yep, prior to a meeting, Colleen going on vacation, I had a conversation with them regarding the Leidos organizational study and the Booth reliability study. Those are set to be completed within the next two to three weeks, so they should be done by the end of March, beginning of April. And then I know Jeannie's trying to schedule an appointment, or a committee meeting, a Board meeting, for a presentation from, directly from both Leidos and Booth to the full Board of Commissioners. I think we're shooting for May due to the town meeting the last week of April.
When do you expect their final reports to be in hand?
They could be in their inboxes as we speak. So it's either the last week of March or the first week of April.
And then, if this is a copy that we still review one more time before it's actually final, final, or this is the last version of it?
I don't have any answer to that, but I can check with Colleen. Colleen will be back on Monday, and I'll have her send out an email and let you know that.
My guess is it's probably there for us to report.
Okay. Okay, great, very good. Thank you. Anything else?
Well, maybe at the end of the meeting, I made it for dates for maybe halfway.
Okay, fine. Were you all, is that it, Jane?
Yes.
And so Power Supply Report from Bill?
Hey, do you folks mind if I sit here and just watch slides at the same time?
Sure. Cable pick you up?
At the last Board meeting-
Are you able to hear for-
He has a mic. He has a clip-on.
Oh, he's got a clip-on, okay, he's got a clip-on, okay. Okay, I didn't see that. Thanks, Bill.
The last Board meeting, Commissioner Talbot had requested the overall information when we were discussing kilowatt hour sales, how historically over the last four or five years we had been stating that we were in kind of a decline. So what we tried to put together in respecting his request was, for the time being, what we have is documented kilowatt hour purchases as they were reported in the DPU reports since the year 2000. We're working on updating the data that's in the Cogstale system to be able to break down sales by customer class. We'll have a lot more informed information further on down the road, but we didn't want to leave you in a lurch, so we put together something that you can look at in the meantime. And as the chart does seem to indicate, we were on a fairly, not steep incline, but a steady growth pattern until we hit 08 or 09. There could be some weather in here, none of these are weather normalized, these are the actual kilowatt hours that were reported in the report.
Is this for the whole year, or for the-
Yeah, these are annual numbers, for the whole year.
But it's, excuse me, but it's an expanded scale, is that correct? I can't see it over there, but-
It is, that's correct. The base actually starts around 685 million.
Oh, I see, okay.
The peak number is over 765, which is why you see this dramatic dip here. It's not as dramatic as it looks, it is still significant, it's about a 6% drop in what came through our metering at the stations, but then it increased back up the following year. And then since then, it's been on the downside. So what we're going to key in on with the Cogstale information is to try to expand on where the reductions actually are happening. Is it all in the commercial sector? Is it all in the residential? Is it split between two, which probably-
That's very, it's a very interesting graphic you've put together there.
We're on the way to try to enhance the-
Uh huh, if I may-
Yeah, yeah.
And that will also include, obviously, there's energy conservation efforts probably embedded in that as well, right?
Right, so once we get comfortable with, all right, let's pull out some weather, some of that is definitely wet spikes in weather or reductions in weather, then we'll try to figure out, is it the economy, or is it the conservation?
That's interesting.
The answer is it's probably a little bit of both.
Interesting. Because that lowest one, is that '09?
Yes.
That's very interesting. That's the economy right there.
Yeah.
And then, just to move on to a few tidbits about February. February was all cold. If you compare the mean temperature, the average mean temperature for Redding, which we keep track of internally, between 2014 and 2015, the average mean temperature in 2014 for the month was 25.7 degrees, and in February this year it was down to 16.2, so there's a drop of the mean temperature of 9.5 degrees right there. It was cold.
So February was a banner month, we're going to hear in a little later in the evening?
As far as sales?
Yeah.
It was a better, I think even at the last Board meeting in February, the night of the Board meeting, we were pretty much already at the point that we had sold the entire-
Interesting.
We were up a little bit, and I think all of these financials actually show that this chart is the same one that's in the purchase power supply report that you get every month. This is February's, what we're trying to look at here is, how did the weather impact the portfolio? And if you look, if you did compare all of the resources for the month of February between 2014 and 2015, the big jump in what actually produced more kilowatt hours is actually the hydro projects, because they were, a few of them were down in 2015.
Oh, interesting.
So there was a significant increase in the kilowatt hour from now, but they're not as big of a percentage of the portfolio. But the Stony Brook Intermediate Plant is, and that jumped from 728% in 2014 up to over 12% in 2015, so that was picking up the kilowatt hours that we needed. It could have possibly come from the interchange, but it, the data indicates that pretty much the slack was picked up by Stony Brook. So this just gives you a comparative of 2014 to 2015 on output from the intermediate plant. Any of the red lines, which are kind of tough to see, they're red and blue, and those are each day's, the base accesses each day. So anytime you see a line there, Stony Brook was producing kilowatt hours. If it was a red day, that's from 2014, and this top line here are the degree days for 2014, so.
And the-
The beginning of the month in 2014, the output was actually higher for Stony Brook, but then when you get to the end of the month, this line here are the degree days for 2015, and you can see that there was a significant generation right here in these last two weeks of February.
And the significance of Stony Brook is that it's more expensive, less expensive than our general portfolio?
Yeah, our portfolio right now, it's a swing, basically it's a swing unit. This actually indicates exactly what Stony Brook's there to do right now, when, not just us, but when the whole region needs kilowatt hours, that's when they're making money. So it actually is a good, a good descriptive, good graph to show you exactly what the Stony Brook Power Plan, which is how we like to see it used in our mix, is actually getting used.
So, okay, good. So I go back to a previous chart that says Stony Brook is, the cost of energy dollars per megawatt hour is $173, which is pretty high compared, it's the third highest of our sources.
So we only want to see it running when the local, location marginal price is probably higher than that, so that's going to lower the dollar kilowatt hours for our-
Good, thank you.
And then this is a descriptor of, just if you look at the overall energy cost, we were up slightly higher between 2014 and 2015, but not by a lot, I mean it was because we had greater output, but the location marginal prices for 2015 are actually lower than they were for 2014.
What does that show? Again, what's the red and what's the blue? I don't have that in my board book.
Oh, the table, yeah.
Oh, the table, right, it's not graphically-
It's not graph-
Got it.
Looking at the cost of the power for the intermediate plant, or the ISO interchange, the numbers are lower for the ISO interchange in 2015 than they are in 2014.
I have a question about your first slide. Just going back to that one. It would be great to have that with the zero, I know it's going to be a much more subtle, but to see with zero at the bottom. I was reading some reports from the IEA saying that, so there's this flat total kilowatt, but then there's, peaks are actually going up relative to average consumption, that 20 years ago, the peak was 50% higher than the average day. Like the peak day was 50% higher than the average day in New England, and now it's like 70 or 80% above the average day, something like that.
We can do that, incorporate that with, when we start breaking out our information, to look at our peaks in relationship to our energy.
That would be good, and I think the trend is going ever upward, and I believe, from what I'm reading, is the reason is that the base power that people are using, things are actually getting more efficient, lighting, refrigerators and whatnot. But the climate stuff, when it's a hot day, it's only so much more efficient it gets and more people are getting them, so the peaks are getting worse. And the point of it would just be that it shows the value of this stuff that's going to be coming down the pipe, the smart technologies that Hamed was talking about at the last meeting here are only going to grow. So I think it would be important to think about that and be able to tell that to the community, that whatever, however expensive it might seem, it's only going to be more valuable to put this stuff in over time.
Is there any reason we can't have these charts in our-
No, that is the plan, unfortunately, because of the timing of the month and when purchase power settled, we're going to include all the charts in with the packet material. It's just the timing issue for this month, so our apologies to you.
Any other questions? That's great, Bill, thank you very much, very useful. I'd love to have the raw dataset on that too, if you don't mind shooting me an email. Yeah, thank you.
As far as the power supply, our peak for wholesale power for 2015, I apologize that the information that was actually presented at the CAB meetings, so, I don't know what was handed out tonight, didn't make much difference, my apologies. However, the main outline is very similar to what was presented at the November CAB meeting of last year, a little kind of late getting around it doing it last year, trying to be early so that we hopefully take advantage of attractive pricing this year, which is why we're presenting it tonight and hoping to get approval for the bandwidths of kilowatt hours that are in the information that was presented, as well as the total amounts.
Do you want to motion?
Sure.
Okay. I'll move the RMLD Board of Commissioners authorize the General Manager to execute one or more power supply agreements in accordance with RMLD's Wholesale Power Supply Plan for power supply purchases for a period not to exceed 2016 through 2019, in amounts not to exceed 31 megawatts in 2016, 29 megawatts in 2017, 27 megawatts in 2018, and 25 megawatts in 2019, presented by the Director of Integrated Resources and on the recommendation of the RMLD Citizens Advisory Board.
Second.
I should add also, and the General Manager, by recommendation, the General Manager should be added to that motion.
Okay, I've had a motion and a second.
A second.
All in favor? We have a 4-0 vote. Motion carries. And Engineering and Operations Report?
Yeah, unfortunately, Hamed is on vacation, and the Chief Engineer, Peter Price, was going to be here to present this report, however, he had a conflict and he's unable to be here.
All right.
So I'll just touch on some of the highlights, and if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to get those to Peter and get responses to the Board. The projects are accelerating currently, there was a lot of weather related in February, so if you look at some of the capital outlines, there wasn't a lot of spending on those projects. Safi, Sadie, Katie are all below the regional and the national averages. For the month of February, we managed the storms very well, there were eight area outages for February, five of them were equipment related, two of them were vehicles, and one of them was caused by a tree. And like I said, if you have any specific questions with any of the budget items or the capital projects, I'd be happy to get you some answers.
Thank you. Bob?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'm going to be presenting the February financials, which represents the first eight months of this fiscal year. Looking at the month of February, the actual month itself came in at a net loss, or negative change in net assets of about $81,000, which decreased our year-to-date net income to about 2.74 million. We had budgeted at this time about 1.5 million, which resulted in net income being over budget by about 1.3 million. The 2.7 that we are actually showing for net income, you have to consider the actually today fuel revenues exceeded fuel expenses by $300,000, and the purchased power capacity and transmission revenues exceeded the expenses by about $700,000. So those are the two pass-through amounts, and we're coming in higher, so we still have four more months to get there as close as possible. It's our best estimate, so the 2.7 looks robust, but we have about a million of that represents the pass-throughs not being in sync, but that's just how it shakes out. On the revenues, page 3A, year-to-date base revenues under budget by about $200,000. Actual base revenues came in at 14.8 compared to the budgeted amount of 15 million. I have a little slide up here. What it's trying to show is that we had reforecasted our base revenue in the late fall by about, we decreased it by about $350,000. And for the first eight months, we're actually doing a little better than our reforecast number by about $120,000. Because the numbers are so close, they line up the way they do, and you don't see too much of a spread. On the expense side, year-to-date purchase power base expenses over budget by $365,000, about 1.9%. Actual purchase power base cost came in at 19.5 million compared to our budgeted amount of 19.2 million. On the operating and maintenance side, expenses combined over budget by about $93,000, or 1%. The actual O&M expenses came in at 9.5 million compared to the budgeted amount of 9.4. The next graph is really, these numbers are even closer, but we're able to spread them out a little bit. So basically, we did reforecast our operating, maintenance, depreciation, and town payment expenses, and they all came in pretty flat, but the first results for the first eight months were about $85,000 higher in expenses compared to our reforecasted amount, but the reforecasted amount was pretty much in line with the budgeted amount, so we are trying to hold costs down as much as possible. On the cash side, page nine, the operating fund is at a healthy 12 million, capital fund balance is at 5.7 million, the rate staff's at 6.7, deferred fuel is down to 4.4 million, and the energy conservation fund balance is at $566,000. On the general information side, page five, as Bill had mentioned earlier, due to the cold month in February, actual kilowatt hour sales, total year-to-date are 476 million, which is about a million ahead of last year's actual figure. Having said that, largest preliminary numbers look like they're going to be coming in lower than last year's actual, but for the first eight months, we kind of caught up due to the weather. On the budget side, cumulatively, the five divisions were over budget by $65,000. And just as an aside, we're finalizing the capital and the operating budgets, which will be, start being presented next month.
Questions?
Just one question, we're at 2.7 now, and we're over budget. Do you anticipate we're going to come in over budget for the year-to-date?
On the-
For the year, for the, once we get done through the end of June?
We're still trying to come in at around 2.5 million, which is, gets pretty close to 7, 8%. So if you look at the pass-through, and it says about 1.7, we may have to cut some expenses the last four months, and depending if the weather cooperates or how businesses go, we should come pretty close, I think, come June.
Okay, great, very good. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Van?
Yep. Do you want to do the motion, or do you want me to explain?
Yeah, let me do the motion. I'll move that bid 2015-19 for one walk-in van be awarded to Boston Freightliner for $139,802 as the lowest qualifying and responsive bidder on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Second. All in favor?
Nope, I have to explain.
Sorry.
That's okay. This van is for technical services. This van will be used as a mobile testing truck. A lot of the maintenance work at the substations was formally outsourced, and the intention now with Hamed's maintenance programs is to have personnel from the RMLD trained and being able to do this work internally. So this van will allow them to transport AC/DC test equipment, oil containment, hazmat equipment, to the various substations that we own on all of these service territories. There were two bidders here, included in the bid is a trade-in of truck number 48. Both bidders had the exact same trade-in value for that, and as Phil had indicated, Boston Freight was the lowest qualified and responsive bidder.
And what is, will this, bringing this in-house saved, do you know? Maybe Hamed knows and-
Yeah, Hamed and Colleen, I don't have that in terms of contracting work.
Yeah, moving it in-house rather than, do you?
I'll get that number for you. But it was a capital budget item for 2015, and it's coming, the budget item was for 150,000, so it came in below the budget amount.
So we've had a motion and a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that about wraps it up. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I think we just need to settle some dates.
Yep. Jeannie, do you have any proposed dates?
I have, next to Board meetings, I have May 14th and May 28th. We can't have an April 30th because town meeting might run over, and what I'm endeavoring is on the 14th, I'd like to get the organizational reliability study presented, and they have coming out of state, so that's why we know the 14th, and I checked with Dave Hennessy, he can make both these dates as well. I guess my next question to the Board is, we also have to get in some budget meetings. April's going to be kind of tough, because one of the members can't make it between the 15th and the 26th, and we have a town meeting on top of that. So that really rules out April. CAB will be meeting, Tom's going to cover the meeting on the 15th of April, and you're going to cover April 26th on the CAB side. I don't know if you want to, maybe we can start the Board meetings at 6:30 on both those dates, and do the operating one day and the capital, it's up to you.
I mean, it's-
The 14th.
Have them be on the same night as the CAB meetings?
No, no, for the Board meetings on-
On the, oh, May, right on-
Our Board meetings on May 14th, I don't know if you want to start it-
Double them up, you mean?
Well, it's, well, it's started at 6:30, so that we can do the budgets.
That sounds good. That sounds like a good idea to me.
It's a full board.
Yeah, that sounds good to do it all.
And then on the twenty-eighth, start at six-thirty as well. So, we can, the budget will take that much longer, but we can start, maybe start the meeting off with the budgets.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
Sounds fine.
So, that covers everything. So, having like four meetings. And then on April twenty-third, we're going to have the policy committee meeting to go with some more of the budgets and the item that you wanted to go over as far as the, I'll say for the fiber infrastructure.
Okay. So, are we going to have, you're saying we should not have a meeting on the thirtieth, right? So.
We, we, well, I don't want to put it because twenty-seventh and the thirtieth are town meeting. And I, if we post it, I, I have two people that have to trail out of state.
Got it. So, we'll make it the twenty-third, Thursday, the twenty-third of April?
Yes, for the policy.
Okay.
May fourteenth is the board meeting, but it's going to start at six-thirty because we're going to incorporate our budgets. Because we used to have budget committee meetings. So, why do that? Why don't we just have the whole, full board there and then?
Right.
What is the, so is it, there's no regular April board?
Right.
So, the May fourteenth is the April meeting and then the twenty-eighth?
Right. Well, because we're dancing around town meeting.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And we have one, one that's not around between the fifteenth and the twenty-sixth.
Yeah.
And then you have town meeting, so we can't.
Okay.
That's why we're having the two and eight.
That's not what the people in Texas during the sitting on my, on my floor are saying.
We can all relate. We all have our own tax issues.
So, everybody can make the fourteenth and the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, we're, we're.
I think that actually works better because we have a lot of meetings in April.
Right, right. Exactly.
Sound good. Good plan.
Right.
Okay.
Awesome.
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I'll move, move to adjourn.
Second.
Yep. All in favor? That's another four O. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.